All right. Y'all stand for the pledge. Daryl, would you like to do some pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, and every and every justice for all.
Okay, this is the meeting of the Lincoln County Commission Regular Session on November 31st, 2018. All present are our members, Daryl Baker, Judy Harlowe, Charles Vance, and KK Matthews. First of all, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the last regular session of the Lincoln County Commission that was held on October 4th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on finger, aye. All right. Okay, under public comment, we have Josh Barker.
The auditor.
And we have the auditor with us tonight. We didn't know you would be coming, but...
I wouldn't miss it. How are y'all doing?
Good.
Let me start?
Start.
Well, first of all, thank you guys for having me. I would typically stand up, but it's easier for me to work from the computer sitting down. It's good to be back here, and what I'm going to show you is, I think, something that's really cool, but I wanted to... This is my, I think, 49th county commission meeting in the last three months. And so, we've been basically all over the entire state in rooms pretty much like this. And a lot of people don't always see this, but when I'm in Charleston, what the state government does is often very dissociated from people, if that makes sense. But when you come into these rooms, what you see is what actually happens in real life. Well, let me just share one little story. So, we were in Pocahontas County like three months ago, and there was a guy who came in and he needed $500 to put tires on a car, and he was the meals-on-meals guy, right? So, he was in charge of delivering food to seniors. And they deliberated, and they found the money, and they gave the guy the $500 check, and he was ecstatic, I mean, over the moon. And I got back to the office, and it was the same day that the impeachment hearing stuck with the Supreme Court, and it went to the pan. And it just struck me because they started talking that day about how people had spent $50,000 or $60,000 buying themselves lunch with taxpayer money, right? And so, in the county commission meeting that I was at that morning, somebody was asking for $500 to go feed basically all the old people in an entire county. And in the building that I worked in, there was a guy, there were three people who spent $50,000 to feed themselves. And so, all of the meetings that I go to have sort of that bent where I get to sit through, oftentimes I'm not first, so I get to see what's actually happening. And so, our office spends a lot of our time trying to get as much of your money back in your pocket as we can. We think the counties and cities and school boards of our state spend their money better than the state does, so we're trying to reduce our fiscal impact on you. And what I'm going to show you today is one of the ways that we're doing that. Along with this, we have created a program... Did we do your audit this year?
No.
It got bid out?
Yeah.
Who did it, you know?
Belastro, Haller...
That of Huntington?
Yeah.
Did we do yours last year?
No.
You guys have bid it out for a while?
Couple of years.
Okay. And so, Belastro, I've seen some of their bills, size of your county, $16,000, $18,000 probably, give or take.
Twenty-one thousand this time.
Twenty-one thousand this time. How much of that time is spent for travel, billing?
I don't really know.
A lot, right? I mean, they're driving from Huntington, so it's 50 minutes or whatever, depending on if you get stuck behind a logging truck. What we are moving towards is having an integrated accounting system that we provide to all of the governments of the state, so that it is built specifically for our counties, specifically for our cities, that works for you, but in conjunction with us, so that people don't have to travel around. Meaning, we are asking you to be audited, and we have to audit you, but we're not giving you the tools to do it necessarily. And so, what the hope is, is we are moving towards that goal of all having one unified accounting system that we pay for, you all utilize, that makes the audit cheaper, less intrusive, and less lengthy. And this is a first step to that. The second thing is we are changing the audit standard. What has happened is, is the audit standard has grown into an animal that doesn't really represent what it's supposed to. I need to come in, and I need to make sure your books balance, and I need to make sure your systems are appropriate. Bond counsel has essentially made our audits something into what they're not supposed to be. If they want to loan you money, they can pay for a different audit, but we need to do the audit that our constitution requires, which is much smaller and much more narrowly tailored to what it is I actually need to know. And so, within the next year, you should be seeing some new audit standards coming from my office that will reduce the total time and cost of the audit by... The goal is 30%. And so, if we're talking about a $20,000 audit, if we could move it to $15,000, nobody's really in a position to thumb their nose at $5,000 or $6,000. I don't think my office would, and I'm certain that our counties wouldn't either. And you start to multiply those things by 55, there's a real impact statewide. And what I said before, we know you guys do a little bit better job getting the money that you have to the people that need it better than we do, so I'd much rather you had it than us. All that being said, this is called Checkbook. And so, when I ran for office, one of the things I talked about was how people see West Virginia as it was in 1950 or 1960. And so, we needed to do some things to show the world that it is 2018 in West Virginia, just like it is everywhere else. And here, we are willing to show you what your tax dollars are buying, so that you can feel comfortable being a new business in our state, or being a new citizen in our state. And so, we built this website. And what's really cool about this site is that it was actually ranked as the number one transparency website in the United States. And West Virginia's been ranked as the number one most transparent state government in the country, which is not a testament to me, that's a testament to the people in my office who built this. But it is really cool that we're number one in something that isn't, you know, bad, I guess, no better way to say it. So, just to give you an idea of how this works, let me run you through it a little bit. We'll start on the revenue side. So, what this website gives you is basically, as quickly as the revenue data is sent to us from the state of West Virginia, it gets updated on our website. So, it's maybe every three days, sometimes it's up to a week. The spending side is automatic. So, when you look in the general revenue, Lincoln County, probably 20 years ago, what percentage of your income was based on severance tax? Probably a quarter or 30%, maybe more? I would have to go look, but you guys were a severance tax dependent county, correct? For a very long time. That is not the case anymore, as we all know, there's different... The world has changed. We had a giant budget deficit four years ago, and I was in the legislature when it happened. And one of the things that happened was, is everyone was like, "Our economy is in the tank because the state doesn't have any money." That is really not a very good correlation, and I'm getting ready to show you why. So, this is the breakdown of all of the different incomes that the state brought in last year. I can move it over to this year, but it's only three months into this year, so it's not a great chart. As you can see, personal income tax and consumer sales tax make up the vast majority of the money that the state spends, 80%. Most people don't realize, but our consumer sales tax is almost $1.4 billion of our general revenue money. It's a lot. It's a lot more than... I mean, it's almost four times the severance tax. Most people see the severance tax as being a much larger driver of what our general revenue does than it is. But, that being said, you look at the consumer sales tax, and most people think that our economy has been declining. Uh-oh. So, I think I'm just a little bit too far away from my... So, most people think that our economy has been declining for the last four or five years. But what this chart shows you is that we have actually outpaced inflation and increased the consumer sales tax income of the state by over $100 million in the last four years. That doesn't conform to any of the things that people were thinking about what was happening in West Virginia. To me, at least, they did. So, what this tool gives you is, is it gives every person the ability to go in and run these reports and see what's actually going on, as opposed to having to listen to it from some bureaucrat in Charleston. It gives every person the exact same access to the information that people in Charleston are using to make their own decisions. And this is going to be an issue. But, that being said, you can see the power of that. From the county standpoint, what's really, to me, the great power of this, and we have two counties that have already gone on board, Berkeley County and Mon County already have their websites up. Josh, are we one week away from like eight or nine more?
Yes.
As soon as the election's over, there's going to be a mess of other counties that are coming on board too. But people come in here, and sometimes you have to tell them no, which I'm sure is brutal. I mean, I've been in legislature, I've had to tell people I couldn't do stuff before. And what happened to me, and what I'm sure happens on the county level, is that people immediately assume that you are saying no to them for some other reason than something that is true. What this website gives you is, you can show them their income. You can say, "Look, we would love to be able to do this project, this project, and this project, but as you can tell, our income levels are this, this, and this. We are not doing... We are not collecting the same amount of this revenue this year, which means we can't do these things." And when people see that, and they know that what you're doing is telling them the truth, it makes the dialogue go so much easier, because people understand that you're giving them a real reason for not being able to do what they want. On the same token, when things are going great, you can say, "Look, here are all of the new revenue sources we have, and these are the things that we're going to be able to do." It gives you a tool to show the public why and what you're doing. On the spending side, this is a really, really... This is sort of a different angle. So, there's 700 million rows of data in this website, and it's updated automatically by our system. And so, it essentially works like Google does. And so, I'm going to hopefully show you here in just a second once it blows up. I'm using a cellphone connection, so it might take a second. All right. So, you go in here, and you type in, "Name a store in the mall that you wouldn't want somebody shopping with a P card with." Charleston Mall.
I don't know where Charleston Mall is.
Victoria's Secret.
All right. Let's go.
Daryl loves...
Daryl goes to the mall. All right. So, what you see is that in 2017, the Supreme Court spent $100 at Victoria's Secret. That's a real line expense. That's an actual expense that the state undertook. And we just combed through 700 million rows of data and found a $100 expense from two years ago. Think about that. Think about the power that that gives every single citizen of West Virginia to be able to see what their state is doing with their tax dollars.
I think there's a story there. Do we know what that was for?
This was a drug court certificate.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
They were buying a gift certificate for a drug court.
That'll work.
We can debate whether or not that's a good idea. It's not my job to tell the Supreme Court what they can and can't buy. It's my job to show you what they bought, so you can tell them what they should and shouldn't be buying. They are elected officials, just like everybody else, and so you can say, "Hey, Supreme Court, what are you doing?" So, here, you left click on it, and we built the system as a check to be the image of a check. We don't really write checks either. But everyone knows what they're supposed to look like, so the information's in the right place. So, you can see who spent it, when they spent it, the check number, the amount, and where they spent it. And down here is all the accounting system information, so that when you click on questions about this payment, you can put your name, phone number, email, or not, and you send a message. And that message goes off to the CFO, the Supreme Court, who goes to my office, and we have to answer whatever question it is that you have about what the purpose of that expenditure was.
Todd Ward.
Excuse me?
Todd Ward.
Todd... Oh, Todd, okay. We can do that, all right. I love the interaction. Most people don't do this. This is even more... I'll tell you what's really funny, is when you start using this thing like at night before you go to sleep, you can't stop. It's... Okay, let's...
Especially when you see what people name. I don't like this.
I thought you didn't go to the mall.
I mean, I've been to the mall.
All right. All right. So, here's Tide Water Grill. So, let's do... Let's right-click on it, and we'll go to search "all Tide Water Grills." And we'll run it by year up here like this. So, in 2017, well, you can see the current expenses. Oh, it's not really running exactly right. But these are all the expenses that the state, for the last four years, has made at Tide Water Grill. Again, that's actually not nearly as much as I expected. I've never run that report before. If you were to run it for South Hills Market, if you were to run it for South Hills Market or Bridger Bistro, it would have been a lot more.
That's the South Hills Market.
Yeah. I wish I could tell you why they spend a lot of money there, what we do.
What's the address of the website?
The website address is wvecheckbook.gov, and for some reason, my projector keeps disconnecting itself.
So, let me get this straight. I'm going to ask a couple of questions.
Yeah, sure.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, we can... You all will be loading this... You could load this data for us, basically, am I right?
Well, I bought... Well, almost. I bought 55 licenses for these, so that every county could have one. There is a nominal cost associated with it, but we've already paid for it, and so, there are 55 counties that have 55 different revenue streams that are in 55 different financial places. Some people have money, some people don't. I didn't want cost to be a factor.
What's... What would the cost be?
I think it's $3,000 in the first year and $1,800 in subsequent years. $3,000 to set it up, and then... And it's yours. You own it, and we build it for you. And it will actually be Lincoln County, checkbook.gov.
How do individuals in the community access it? Are you talking about them accessing it, or are you...
Correct. And so, it'll be a website just like this one. And it actually adds a layer of work on the clerk, and I apologize for this, but the clerks that have done this have told me it's about 15 minutes every two weeks to upload the information into the site, and the actual building of the site takes about four hours. I was a little nervous that this was going to be sort of cumbersome for counties that are otherwise understaffed and overworked, which I understand. But it isn't. We've actually got it to where it's pretty easy to do. Go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
So, this is already up and running?
This is the state one, yes.
Every citizen can go on?
This is live. I'm doing this in real time.
Okay. What did you say the address was?
Wvecheckbook.gov. Now, you know what I'm going to do, is I'm going to go ahead and show you. And you can also get on...
I thought you was going to get a pass.
That will look more like your... Is Mon County and Berkeley County will look more like what your guys' website would look like than what the state's.
Was there any charge on the individuals from the state that use it?
No.
What would we be paying for them to...
You're essentially paying for the licensing of the software. So, it's like buying Windows... It's like buying Word for your computer, right? There's a cost associated with it that I've actually already paid for. You would be paying me back, which is, I didn't want cost to be a variant anyone having this. I want everyone to have.
But it's $1,800 each year, I would say.
They told us that the website, if you guys bought it, would cost over $200,000, and you're getting up to $3,000. And so, here's Bridger Bistro, which is apparently a much larger grouping of people who spend a lot more money at Bridger Bistro. And this isn't aggregating quite right today for some reason, but we can see down here that... You'll see that there's a very large amount of expenditures that occur at Bridger Bistro from the state. From your all standpoint, from a clerk and from a commission standpoint, what you'll have for the first time probably is the ability to really review what you've done in real time as you make budget decisions going forward. So, I was in the legislature, but when we would go into finance meetings, we would be making decisions about budgets for agencies, and we would be taking the agency head's word for what they were saying. They'd walk in, and they'd say, "We need $50 million to do this," and they'd say, "Why?" And the agency head would say, "Because," essentially, and we had to sort of take their word for it. But now, all of our legislators can fact-check every single budget request with what the agencies have bought, when they bought it, why they bought it, and how it compares to years before. And you'll be able to do that on the backend of your own system. So, what will be... End up being built is something that you guys can use in a different way than essentially the public, so that you can build your own budgets and have the best access to information. There's one more thing I could show you, but one of the really interesting things about this is, is when people are bidding on work for the government, the only way to make sure that you get the best price is for all the information to be available. And so, when all of the people who are competing for the work that you guys are buying knows exactly how much it ended up costing, the price of your goods is going to go down. The price of all of our state goods is going to go down. The free-market economy is based on information, and the more information you include into the system, the lower the price gets, because the people that want it are going to know what it costs, and they're going to underbid next time. It has to happen.
Is there training and tech support built into that cost?
That's us. The training and tech support is my personal staff, and they're available to you 24/7 as they are now. They built this themselves. They know more about it than anybody in the world, and what I can tell you is that, as our office has, in my opinion, always, we are there to help you in any way possible.
So, in certain ways, if you enter something wrong, you can tell...
Exactly right. Yes. And this is yours, so you get to decide what it looks like. You get to decide what's on it. You get to decide, you know, what revenue streams... Because there's things on this... There are state expenditures that aren't on here. We had to make decisions. There's no Medicare payments and CHIP payments, and, you know, there are private information that does way more harm than good being public, if that makes sense. And so, we had to, you know, we made some decisions about what should be on here, and we'll be there to help you do that too. And the people that built the website have done this for 1,900 or 2,000 governments, so they have a real good handle on the kind of things that should be there and shouldn't. There is actually some YouTube videos you can get on and see some of the other links of many websites they built.
Are we doing that? Didn't we do it?
Is there breakdown of what is put on and what's left off? Is there any...
No, I mean... It's up to you what you want to put on. On our side, basically, if it's privately protected, personal information, it's not on. I mean, I can't stress enough that it is your website. You will...
Will there be a link on your website?
Yeah, that's the other thing, is so, what the hope... That's what Mon County did. The hope for me to build is one site that has all the counties together, so that you guys can go on there and see what Boone and Logan and Canawha and you name the contiguous county is spending on certain goods, and you can say, "Hey, if Canawha is able to get their motor oil for their fleet, or their Peter paper, or whatever it is, at a certain price, why can't we get that?" And so, you'll see the vendors who are giving everybody the best prices of all the goods everybody buys.
Whose server is this on?
It'll be on your server. Well, actually, it'll be on OpenGov server, excuse me. It's cloud-based, so they will maintain the data for you.
Now, you said this would help us with our audit. Will it help us in the sense that we have information already on there, so it would be easier to get together?
It's great. You tied that back, because I almost did. So, the first thing that we're going to do is, if our auditors are doing your audit, they're going to be instructed to do as much of their work for this website as possible. And I don't know when you're going to have one of our auditors do it. I can't control how a bid-out auditor is done, but we do 40 or so of them a year. And I'm just going to show you one thing real quick, see if I can catch this. So, I'm going to show you one thing just from my office, just to show you...
But essentially, the standard from your office is going to decrease, which is going to save us there, and...
And this is going...
And we'll still be saving money in the long run.
Correct. And specifically, what this will do is, this will reduce travel costs for people that, when my office is doing the audit, because I'm going to instruct them to spend less time traveling. You live in Lincoln County. Your auditor is either coming from Charleston or Huntington. I don't think we have one here. Let me come up here and see if I can just show you...
Historically, back when we had you all being the auditors, around 32,000...
It's always more. Yes, sir.
Yeah. Now, would this make it cheaper by being involved with this particular program or not?
I doubt that it would be cheaper than a bid-out audit, but it would be cheaper than what we used to charge, if that makes sense. So, I... Okay, I'm just going to show you one thing real quick. Let me see if I can... All right. Here's travel. I'm going to show you our travel budget. Hopefully, I can get this to work. Something is wrong with visualization time, so thank you. Well, I can't show you, but in the first two years of our office doing things like this, we've reduced our travel costs by $350,000. So, our employees' costs are spending $350,000 less dollars traveling because we're implementing things like this that are keeping our auditors at home as much as possible, and that money's going back into the program, meaning we're not saving it and squirreling it away, we're reducing costs on our entities. That's the entire reason we're doing it, so...
So, your audits would be cheaper then?
That's the goal. Yes, sir. We haven't started doing it yet, so I hate to promise a result, but I can promise you the process, and that is, is that we are going to instruct them to do that. And I can't imagine a world where their audits have to take less time if they're spending less windshield time, because they can't audit from the car.
But it may even be enough to pay for this maintenance.
It may be.
Might be.
That's the hope. And that's... And it's an entire package of things that we're doing on a multitude of levels to try to make everything less expensive and faster and easier for you guys, because I think in some ways, the things that we require you to do are a little bit out of control. And I don't know that anybody's really looked at them in a long time.
On the other side of it, does this cut down on anything that we're doing now?
In what way?
Is this going to be extra work? Completely extra work, or anything that we submit to you now? Anything that we submit now go away?
I don't think so. But I will tell you that I think it would be phenomenal if everyone starts using this and says, "Hey, can I use this to do that?" I mean, that's one of the really cool things about having everyone doing it, is they're going to start finding new ways to use it. I can't see it through your eyes. And, I mean, if I can tell you anything about myself that's totally truthful, is if you bring an idea to me, I will try it. I very infrequently say the word "no." And so, if you can figure out a way to use this to do all kinds of other stuff, I will make sure it happens at every time. And OpenGov can build and do all kinds of stuff for you that is customizable, if it's something that you want to do.
All right, well, thank you.
Yes, and I'll tell you, if it's something you do want to do, after the election, have a meeting, public comment, do a vote. I mean, I'm... It's easier when it happens in the regular course of everything. And I know that you guys have a big week ahead of you, and another big month after that. I'm not trying to... There's no time for impression here. This is going to be available to you on your timeframe, and you just need to let us know if it's something you're interested in, when you're ready, and we will make it happen.
How long is it? Just one question. How long has your oldest member or oldest county been on this site?
Like, six weeks.
Okay.
Or eight weeks. I mean, maybe...
I've been on it longer, yeah.
Too long... I mean, not...
The only question I... Reason I was asking that is, if we call the county commissions and these other... The only question I, reason I was asking that is if we call the county commissions and these other places...
If you call Mon County, they will tell you exactly what their experience was. And, um, and if you call Berkeley County, they will tell you again as well the same.
So, just kinda historically, we like to see how things work before we jump in the middle of it.
Oh, sure, no, that's great. Carrie Blaney, Carrie Blaney would love to talk to you guys about that.
Robin County's getting ready to be, uh, I think they're ninety-five percent...
You guys won't read, my emails are popping up there. Mon County actually bought almost the full suite of stuff that OpenGov does. They like this website so much that they, they spent a bunch of money on their own end to customize it on the backside.
We sure wish we had as much money as they do.
Well, I, I actually wish that, uh, the auditor's office had as much money as they do.
A good county that would work good for you all, about the same size budget-wise, and they're getting ready to, uh...
You're talking about Glado?
No, I'm talking about Summers County.
Summers County would be a good one. Um, and, yeah, uh, yeah, call Summers County. Call John David O'Neill, if you don't know him. Who else did you meet that up there?
Uh, the woman, the clerk. Who's the clerk in Summers County?
I was thinking that when you just mentioned it.
She's, uh, what's her name? Mary Beth.
Just to me, looking at, you know, I'd like to look at some of their, you know, after they've been on a few months.
Sure, that's, and I'd love for you to do that. Yeah, I think that makes...
That way, to see how, how effective it is versus, you know, how applicable it is to what we do and things like that.
Sure.
But I, I, I do think it's a good idea. I mean, to have something that you can actually draw from in the hand or compare with others. We just have so little to compare with here, you know, so...
I get you.
It's kinda limited returns on what we, you know...
It is, but the one thing I will tell you is that average people love this, because it gives them a strong footing to be able to interact with their government. And I think that's important. And I do appreciate you guys having me. And I'm sorry, I didn't, you didn't know I was coming down. But anytime you need me, you let me know. It's thirty-five beautiful miles to drive, so I'm happy to do it. Thank you guys very much.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Josh.
Good seeing you, y'all.
Thank you.
Y'all just get ahold of me when you're ready.
Okay, the next person we have is State Con with West Virginia.
Clearly is exciting.
I'll bet you make it, very exciting.
Old-fashioned handouts. You guys can fight over this one, huh? I, I hope you guys remember us, the Region Two Workforce Investment Board. And you'll be happy to know I'm serving two purposes this evening. One is to tell you how we've assisted the region, which includes Boone, Lincoln, Mingo, Wayne, Campbell, Logan, and Putnam, the seven counties. And to sort of tell you what we've done over the last year. There is a booklet in here, small one, with my picture at a very younger age. If you guys believe, if you will believe this story, I will sell it anywhere. And, and, uh, it tells you the things that we can do. One of the important things that I wanna remind, by the way, you're the sixth commission I've done in the last six weeks, so, you know, I just want you not to look a little bit. And, and, uh, you and the, the seven county commissioners and the mayor of Huntington as being part of the fiduciary interest. So, you do have a financial interest in what we do. Even though we get the money directly, if we ever go south, you'll be happy to know that all the county commissions will get a note about it all. Which is part of WEOLA, which is the federal law that controls our existence. Uh, we have an office, our comprehensive office is in Huntington. And here in Lincoln County, we have an office and are there daily at the Southern Community Technical College, which, of course, is at the Lincoln Consolidated. So, that's where, where our office is. And on the backside of the brochure is a list of our offices. The funding source for this is one-hundred percent federal. And, uh, over the last, uh, we, we basically offer, we like to call them products, the intensive training, in other words, sending folks to their college two-year degree or the last two years of four-year degree, five thousand dollars a year, or in other words, ten thousand dollars. And over a period of time, plus fifteen hundred dollars supportive services. The employment side, you folks are eligible for us to assist. Let me give you an example of the county commission we assisted. Mingo County operates Laurel Lake Pool. They were into a real problem this year. They were gonna be unable to do it. Obviously, this is like all federal programs, you know, there's no green money. You have to fit within the screen, because I look terrible in orange. So, consequently, we were able to do that. We have a youth program, which basically serves eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds, which are always nice to know that twenty-four-year-olds are now youth doctors. So, they, you know, you probably thought they were adults, but, no, they're still qualified. So, using that program, we were able to help them with the lifeguards, et cetera, through work experience. We were able to pay for the lifeguards, et cetera. And as I go through these employment programs, we will be more than happy to assist you because you qualify under the same rules. Because you'll notice, as you read through the thing, that it's public, private, and nonprofit. And you guys are obviously a public. We have a thing called transitional employment. You're gonna hear more and more about this because the Senate just passed another huge block of money that'll be flowing down up to West Virginia and the other states. Basically, it's addiction and felony. So, what we will do under transitional employment, if you hire someone or someone hires, we will reimburse the first sixty hours seventy-five percent of their pay. So, if you're paying ten dollars an hour, because I can multiply this quickly, we would reimburse seven dollars and fifty cents an hour. Then, if you decide to retain them, we'd put them on what's called an on-the-job training contact, contract, and we would reimburse the next three-hundred-and-twenty hours at fifty percent. But again, you're talking about taking someone who possibly has had your addiction problem, legal problem, and another category that actually doesn't fit in any, either one of those, the cancer recipients or SNAP recipients are eligible for the same program. If it was an individual who had not had particular problems beyond the job training program, we would reimburse at fifty percent wages, uh, to a maximum of forty hours a week for the first three-hundred-and-twenty hours of employment. So, again, if you hired someone at ten dollars an hour for the first three-hundred-and-twenty hours, we'd reimburse the county by fifty percent. Also, let's say we were interested, you were interested in doing a group training program of some sort. We will reimburse forty percent of the cost. And let me give you an example of how that's working today. There's a private company, uh, Lostolium, in Huntington, who is taking their entire workforce. They run five different lines. And they want the people in the, and I'm gonna call this line five and line one. They want everybody to be able to enter work. Their cost of doing that training is one-hundred thousand dollars. We're reimbursing them forty thousand dollars. So, in other words, it's costing them sixty thousand dollars. Same idea works with, with you all if there's a project that we can put things together and work with. We do a customized training, which would be a group of employers going together, and they wanted one type of employee. Works a little bit like his thing. If you got three counties going together that wanted to, to, you know, train for certain positions, water and sewer. Uh, one of the examples I can think of, going back to my old mayor days in Winfield, is that if everybody has a PSD, sewer plants and all this, and there's every now and then up to training that comes along, we could assist with that by paying forty percent of your share. So, consequently, the whole idea of this, it's all federal flow of money. And just to give you an example of what we've done over the last three years, we have sent five-hundred-and-seventy-seven folks in the seven counties to, uh, college, two-year degree or finishing up a four-year degree. And sixty-five percent of those folks have joined the workforce. The OJT positions, we've had four-hundred-and-seventy-four positions developed, and we filled three-hundred-and-eighty-eight positions, this is over the last three years. Last year, for example, we did a hundred and two companies, uh, there are, a classification of, of folks is adults and dislocated workers. You'll be happy to know dislocated worker is a person who's been laid off. Adults is anybody who hadn't been laid off. So, uh, we had two-hundred-and-ninety-four adults, we had ninety-four dislocated workers, and a hundred-and-twenty-nine between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four that were put to full-time employment over the seven counties. The private sector, we did fifty-five companies and developed two-hundred-and-seventeen contracts out of it. The incumbent worker, we had six employers for twenty-seven employees trained in the customized training, pretty well the same numbers. Just to give you an idea about the expenditure of funding, uh, la, in just the last year, not the last three years, the last year, we filled a hundred and two positions on on-the-job training. Seventy-six of them were, are still employed with the same employer. Twelve have gone on to other employees, and like everybody else, we found fourteen folks who really didn't wanna work. And hopefully, they're working on that. That, the reimbursement rate to those folks was a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and forty cents. So, I hope this gives you some idea of how we can assist folks, assist you right here in the county. This has all the marvelous details in it, nice pictures. And my card's there. If there's any way we can assist you, either from a private sector side or from the Lincoln County side, we would love to be able to do it. We, we have folks here every day. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
You mentioned the pool in Mingo County that you helped pay the lifeguard. How, how's county governments using you? Do you have any, like, county courthouses that use people? I know we've had, you know, some people at the water plant in Allen Creek and, like...
Yeah.
Is that, do you have people that actually come in and you help subsidize their salaries?
Yes.
They just went through this election, setting up the machines and stuff for the election and wanted to pay some people.
Right.
But that'd be a...
That would be something, as long as they're your employees or the PSD's employees. We'll reimburse whoever the employer is. If it's the PSD, and I realize the PSD costs come back to you guys eventually. I was at one county commission meeting where I spent a lot of time listening about PSDs and reminded myself the days when I operated water and sewer. And now, pleasantly not involved in either one. But again, yeah, we can offset. I don't wanna sound a little bit like the auditor, but any ideas, like, I'll be perfectly honest with you, I'd never considered our youth operating a pool, okay? But we got, I went down, talked to the Mingo County, and we put the thing together, and we contracted that out, but we influence our contractors since we send them the money. Sent them down there and it worked perfectly. I mean, it actually worked, enabled the pool to stay open, that. Same thing, if, as long as it's a full-time employee of...
What has to be full-time?
Well, in the period of time. Now, in the youth allows for a little bit more flexibility, because in the youth program, you don't hire them at all. The youth program pays for them to have work experience, which can go to two-hundred hours, which is what we used at the swimming pool. So, we had about nine kids involved. The maximum they could work was two-hundred hours, but they were making eight dollars and seventy-five cents, so that wouldn't have been summer job for a couple of months. So, that's, there, I, I didn't wanna totally bore folks this evening. But those are the, you know, when we sat down and discussed about coming up with the idea, and then you say, "Alrighty, Jake, how are you gonna fund this?" That's what I'm talking about, is putting together things that accomplish what you want, which will save you, you know, not a huge amount of money, but it saves you a little bit of the upstart cost anyway. And any company, we could do the same thing with working here in, in Lincoln County. So, if you have a business that has interest, we'd be more than interested in working with you. And particularly with you guys, if you have, since you were so nice to, even to witness my signature, if, if there's, say, he's already trying to help, you know, if there's anything that you could use as long as it's full-time, if it could be a youth situation where, and, and the only thing I'm doing, I'm talking off the top of my head, so please feel free to correct me, okay? But since the youth program is really eighteen to twenty-four, the ballot boxes, bringing them back to the courthouse on that evening.
Yeah. With the equipment in and out, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's something they could do. Their employees of, of, our HRDS, our contractors, so those, those employees, they have the responsibility of making sure they got everything back to you and all that. So, there are all sorts of little things like that that I've learned that we can work out without any problem. And, and again, if you save a dollar here, a dollar there, and, and, and everything, it all amounts up to money, as we know it.
I kinda thought back to, to like voter roll issues, temporary, it was something... We need a few people, but you don't need them, you know, maybe permanent, but they would definitely be called under a, a, a full-time category. From time to time, we have to work on voter roll issues.
But we also have Camp Lakeview, where our kids in the summertime, we take kids from all over the county and take them up to the four-H camp up there. And we, you know, we have, every year, we have to have lifeguards. We have to have people that deal with food up there and things like that. So, I think, you know, that would work out a little well, especially for those, that group of eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds.
Right. And, and again, a lot of it's eligibility. If their parents were laid off, that's perfect. And the income guidelines, a-again, we can work with those. If we can give them to you and, you know, that's condition of employ, I mean, you know. But again, they can work with the, with the, uh, youth provider and they can be there and forth. So, yeah, we, and we just work it out by numbers. They can't work over two-hundred hours, but that gives you an awful lot of coverage, depending on how long, you know. And it's good for the kids in the county to earn the money and accept the responsibility. And like I said, us folks have been around a day or two, never realized that at twenty-four, I was... And I know at twenty-four, I was still a youth. I would really be great today. I keep thinking, if the feds keep the calendar going, maybe I can go back to being a youth. But I, I don't have a lot of hope for that. But I thank you guys for the time. If there's anything we can do, please let me know. We're here to serve Lincoln County, just like we do the other counties. Sometime, I get accused of not coming out of Campbell County, but, but we're here every day, so any way that we can assist you and anything you'd like to do that we can assist the county, please just let us... Let us tell you no. You suggest to us that we do it, and let us. And also, we're having a little, you know, Nicky Brown, the sort of headed up the Leos over the years, which is what we like to officials. And Nicky did not run for reelection, so I know Nicky will be leaving us in January. Dave Pennington from Wayne County will be leaving us. So, if one of the commissioners would like to come once a quarter and join us, we certainly would appreciate that, and we'll be back in touch with you with that. Thank you guys an awful lot. You do a great job.
Thanks, Jake.
Doris, you are up next on public comment. Say the best, relax, alright.
Definitely following me, ma'am, that's...
Well, uh, you know, while I'm here, I want to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to attend the, uh, public conference and get the colors right here. I don't wanna get a tinkle so bad. Thank you. You ready? Thank you, ma'am. My own top layoff. I'll give you a tinkle, alright? I'm gonna take a moment.
Sorry, I'm leaving, Mr. Smart. How was your conference?
Oh, my pleasure.
How was your conference?
It was great. I got, um, we were awarded a grant. And I, I don't know if y'all are aware of this type of grant, but, um, it's a grant that we were awarded for recycling, okay? This is, um, the grant was a total of sixty thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. So, I'm asking Maureen, I says, "Well, how long, what's gonna happen?" I'm gonna hit myself. I only have one copy, so y'all have to share it. Last spring, um, we were told by the public's management board that we couldn't do the recycling, because they were doing it on, using it on personal vehicles. So, we had a meeting and, uh, from the public's management board, and they says, "You can't do that because you're not covered under our liability insurance because you're members of the board." So, don't do it. So, we quit doing it. So, we got a lot of flack from a lot of people. And so, we called Carol Thork-Martin, says, "Gotta do something. The people are mad because we're not recycling." And she said, "Well, they've come up with a plan. We're gonna partner with Canal County, and that, because they have labor that they can use." So, they come up with this grant for sixty thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And I asked her, I said, "How long do we have to use this?" And she said, "Well, one year. We have to use a large percentage of it." And what we're doing is buying four of those bins. And, so, we'll have, um, one of them here at the courthouse, one at Midway Elementary, and one at McCorville Community Center. Uh, the South Charleston, uh, I guess it's South Charleston, no, it's Canal County, will keep the extra bin on their lot. So, when we get one full, we call and say, "Hey, bring it to us," and they'll come and swap it out. So, we'll continually, you know, have them, you know, focused. So, I asked her, I said, "Well, what, what are we gonna do, you know? We have a year to use it. What are we gonna do?" She said, "Well, this grant is a sustaining grant." And I says, "What is that? I never heard of it." She said, "Well, when the year's up, we can plow it again." I said, "Really?" She said, "Yeah, so we can, we can keep it going through 2021. And by that time, maybe we'll have some kind of a situation where we can really do some recycling in, in Lincoln County." And so, um...
Maybe you think they're gonna get these containers?
Okay, we can't, the grant, of course, as, as Daryl knows, you know, you get them, you award them, and we can't order the bins until January. It'll take six weeks to get there. Now, Canal County is gonna use their labor and their trailer, or trucks, whatever, to bring them and set them in place. And we have to pay the labor for the guy and the expense on the truck to bring them to each location. And that's why it's so much money. We've got to have other money in here that we can use for that.
So, they're gonna empty them by switching them out?
Yes, yes, yeah.
So, let's pay for our dumpster right now, or the recycling one, not the...
Okay, the one out here, I, I asked Maureen about that, and that one only takes plastic. These here will only take cardboard and paper, because right now, that's what the money is, which is not much.
Cardboard, what we, we take plastic containers is what we take out there?
Okay, yeah, okay, so, uh, this one out here, I asked Maureen, I said, "What about that one?" And, uh, she said, "Well, that one was one that we had many years ago, and we paid on it, paid on it from a cleanup, and now, we have a big credit with them."
Oh, okay.
So, I asked her at one time, I said, "Well, how much credit do we have?" And she said, "Well, she really didn't know. She had to check into it." But that's why that one is still there, because there's credit on it. And they're gonna give us back the money, so instead, they're leaving the bin out here. So, anybody coming along for, for plastic in it.
Well, yeah, so we had to lock it up, but, yeah, it's, it's...
Or you did?
Yeah, eventually, we did, Mr. Smart. We milled it back for a while, but people started... We had to lock it up eventually. But we open it every day, you know, normal business hours.
Yeah, I had one woman that calls me, and she calls Maureen, I mean, she's a, she's, she's always having more spray, you know, wanting to know about recycling and this and that, and I don't think she has anything else to do. But she says she comes up here and drops, and drops her place.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think it's used, it's used, and it's used properly now that we lock it up, because I think it was after hours that people were coming to get the trash.
Right, well, now, this one is, uh, well, you can see what the bins look like there. And, uh, so, and I don't know if they're gonna have the benders in them or what, but, uh, they...
Kinda looks like it, doesn't it? It looks like it's divided.
Right, so, that's what they look like, and y'all can keep that if you want to. I only have the one copy with me. But, uh, they, uh, they will be... But they, they will be here, it'll take, we can order them in January, and they'll take six weeks to get them, and they'll be here sometime about the middle of February.
But you don't know when that one's, I don't know how we have enough room out, but will that one be gone when we get the other in?
No, no, because this is through somebody else.
It's gonna be a lot smaller.
Okay.
Well, see, Maureen shouldn't have come up here and explained all this to you all, you know.
I just said, put it down.
And the other was paper, all paper, cardboard and paper?
Cardboard and paper is what the other one will be, and there's pictures of them there, of what they look like.
We use a lot of that here.
Right, exactly, and we would, see, when we were getting that stuff, we were taking cardboard and paper down to Slack Street.
Relax, well, now, listen.
They love to see us come down there, because they get big bucks for that.
I have not found, Mr. Sharp, we are still taking paper. I haven't found it, here we go.
Well, they were, they, I don't know, about six months ago, they were paying a hundred dollars a ton for scrap paper. The market dropped so much, they're paying them fifteen dollars a ton to take it to the landfill.
I use community service, so we get a little cheaper rate.
Yeah, so.
Well, I agree. I tell people that, you know, they call our house and complain about why we're not picking up the paper and stuff like that. I says, look, I said, if you have a problem, go to the nearest pet shelter. I says, you know, they love having paper in there, and they do. And so they say, oh, that's a good idea, I'll do that, you know. But we, we just, we'll take them onto Slack Street, and, and a couple of little ladies that can't get out, and that's all, you know, because we just feel like it's, it's good to do that for our neighbors. But this is, this will do us for, through twenty-twenty-one, the end of twenty-twenty-one. And after that, I don't know, there's different ways, and that's something they talked about at the conference. They talked about recycling, they talked about having a good relationship with your waste hall. They talked about things we're not doing, they talked about ethics, and with our organization, with any organization, even yours too, and what we're required to do to the, for the Secretary of State. And also about our, our bylaws. And it was just a real informative conference this time. We had a couple of good guys up there, we had one guy that was a Barney Fife imitator, and he was so funny.
Looked just like him.
Yeah, he, he.
Sounded like him.
We were sitting there in the room waiting for the guy to come in, and all you heard was this big loud voice out there in the hallway hollering, and it sounded just exactly like Barney Fife. Then he comes in like this into the room, and he was really funny. Then we had a guy by the name of, what was his name, Bill, Bill Lep, L-E-P-P. He was a professional storyteller, and he won a contest up in Charleston one time about the biggest liar. Yeah, Van Delyer, about lying, you know how they have the liars contest? So it, it was pretty entertaining, and I'll say one thing, a few years back, Stonewall was absolutely at the bottom of the pit on having a conference. I mean, it was terrible, the food was terrible, the service was terrible, everything. So then we had one up next to Wheeling, and they wanted us back. And so the people, the solid waste story says, well, you come up to Wheeling and see our, the conference up there, and you'll know how to treat people when they have a conference at your place. And so they came up there. And then we went back to Stonewall, which that's, you know, a good central location. We went back there, and I'll tell you, the service was absolutely excellent, people were waiting on you, all the restaurant help was great. Have you been up there to see the new? And, and everybody was, we pulled up there, and it was a guy standing there with a cart waiting to take our luggage. And he stayed right with us to the desk, took us to the door and everything, and they, they were just very, very polite people. And I made a comment on it to him about it, you know, that their service was excellent this time, and so, you know, I think it's under new ownership. But anyway, this grant was, you know, will maybe help us get our bearings. We got three years from January, so three full years, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. By that length of time, you know, maybe there's something we can work on to get recycling everywhere, because it's supposed to be mandatory, you know, for a homeowner. And yet we can't do it if we don't have any way of doing it. So they, but anyway.
Well, congratulations on it, and we will find a place for the dumpster.
Well, like I say, I thought Maureen would have come over and said something.
They have to move a police car.
Yeah, we can move some of the giant bike.
But it's a, it'd be a big boost for, and we put them in these three different areas, because that's where, there's a lot of traffic at the McCorville Community Center. And Midway, they just piled up with cardboard and paper. And we figured over here's a good place, so we're gonna start with that first, then maybe answer that if it works out good, who knows? Maybe we could get three more or whatever, I don't know.
I'll have a dumpster, and I'll tell you, I can't even put my trash in it because it stays full. Everybody up in Grupisville uses my dumpster.
Well, suppose, when we had a meeting with Carol Throckmorton back in the spring, she said that the guys would have to monitor it to make sure nothing else is going in it. So I guess they'll make a trip over here every week or two.
We started out, right, there was one day, I had some people try to use the trash.
Yeah.
But we got, we walked, we've got a back contract.
I think there's supposed to be signs come with it or something absolutely.
Well, we had signs and cameras and still people.
And I don't know if these are gonna be locked or in a locked place or not, I don't know.
We have that one locked, don't we, back here?
Yeah, we had to switch out, we had one dumpster.
What other locations was it?
The courthouse, the McCorville Community Center, and Midway Elementary.
And obviously, there's nothing over the Harp and Ranger area, but, you know.
Well, we put on record, when we took that one out there, I tried, I contacted several places at Harp, so that one we only run the dumpster on their property. So that's why we stuck it out here as the last.
Well, like I say, I don't know.
Court went back, I mean, there wasn't anything.
I don't know how much credit that's got on it, I've tried to find out, and I can't, and, but, and I told, I told Helen, I said, well, one of these days, they'll just come over and haul it off, or the credit charge gets up, or they'll send Maureen a bill that, hey, you owe us the last month.
That's probably what'll happen.
Probably.
Probably the last two years.
But that, that one's been out there for a number of years. But now, like I say, the, the solid waste management board is gonna work with us on this. There's a couple of other solid waste things that are trying out this, to see if it works, where they don't have mandatory recycling. And so far, it's worked good in other areas. So we'll just see if, if it works here, and we've got three years to try to prove that it will work.
Thank you.
The electronics cleanup went really good this last year.
Oh, did it?
Yeah. And Larry went over and worked it with them, so, with Maureen.
I think Mr. Lep, after winning the biggest liar contest, decided to go into politics, didn't it?
Oh.
Good, just to go.
She looks serious.
Yeah.
You know, let me, let me take this one. One of the girls from the solid waste management board was giving a speech on how, on ethics and, and things like that, on what you can spend and what you can't spend. Yes, the first picture I was on the wall up there, what you can't spend for, a blue sectional sofa. I said, what's the West Virginia fool gonna show up there? But anyway, I appreciate y'all backing me to go up there. Last year, you didn't have paper, but I won the trip. But every year, it seems like I learn something different, and this year was very informative, you know, they, they really talked about the things that mattered. You know, other times, things are just right over your head, you've been there, you know, and I wish you'd come back one day.
They've improved the classes, business schedule. Prior to this year, there used to be, when you go to, you get your agenda, from ten-fifteen to eleven, it'd be like two or three classes. And obviously, you can't, you can't be in all of them, you'd have to pick one. This year, at each slot, it was only one class. And I thought that was, that was really great.
I have a list on that, you know, but, but anyway, we'll, we'll see how this works, and, and we, like I say, maybe it will work better. But we had, because we don't have the equipment to move these things, so Canal County says that they will use their manpower, but we have to pay for their hourly wage. And that comes out of this, and they pay for travel expenses, which comes out of this. So we'll see how that all works, and if it goes well, you know.
And we get it, we'll make sure we get the word out that it's here, so people can use it through the day.
Yeah, well, I'm sure Maureen may put others in the paper.
Well, I put a picture on Facebook, and it was like wildfire, it wasn't good, so.
Well, I tried to start up a Facebook page for the Lincoln Solid Waste Authority, but nobody uses it. Nobody ever goes to it, you know, and they come back, why haven't you posted on this lately, you know? What's your post, you know? But anyway, like I say.
With me, Daryl, Sean, we can get this town in pop and chat with you.
Yeah.
I got to talk to David Armstrong up there from Canal County. He wants us to get together with him, because he's fixing to purchase some new dumpsters. He said, maybe we can put it all in there and get a good bid, we'll get a lower price, if we put them all together, you know, quantity-wise. So he knows, he knows the bidding system, he knows who to talk to, so I told Maureen, let's just let him, let him handle it, we can figure it out.
Do your bidding for you?
Yeah.
All right, okay, well, thank you guys, and why do you?
I had, I had a very good time, and it was, I really enjoyed it. It saved, you know, the, the solid waste authority a little bit of money. Thank you.
All right, under discussion of concerns of possible action, we have Lisa Wales. If I would have been, are you leaving us, Mr. Mailer?
Yeah.
If I would have been thinking, I would have called you up here first, if you could.
Oh, no, I learned a lot of things this evening, I've probably taken notes, and it's some interesting stuff. I'm here today to present drawdown number thirteen for the Community Development Block Grant for the Lower Mud Project. The project itself is still on schedule, substantial completion at the end of December. And substantial completion actually means turning on water, but you'll still be working out tanks in certain areas, flushing, that kind of stuff, with final completion at the end of January, so.
I think we should ask Harv to turn the water on for us.
Can I have a big ceremony? I agree. But I have, the draw, this drawdown request for the small cities funding is actually for ten thousand dollars. It's for an invoice for metal landing storage systems, which is working on the tank portion of the project. The invoice attached is actually for a hundred thousand, five thirty-seven, eighty-six. But a total of ninety thousand, five thirty-seven, and eighty-six of this portion has already been submitted for payment to USDA for the project. Reason why we're breaking out ten thousand, there was a little quirk early on in the bidding process, of turning the, it's a glass line tank, and there's some certain elements that it's made out of, that USDA do not, they don't pay for gas line, glass line tanks, there's some quirks. So basically, at that time, it was determined that ten thousand dollars to cover that portion will come out of the development block grant fund. So we're now at that point in the invoicing stage, so that's why this little portion has to come out. That is the only invoice that I have attached for this particular drawdown, so if you have any questions, I.
All right, now, what was the number of?
It's drawdown request thirteen for the Community Development Block Grant, and it's for ten thousand dollars.
Okay, do I have a motion, though, let's tell?
Amen.
Drawdown thirteen for the Community Block Grant, and a motion in second, all in favor, aye?
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you next month, more than likely.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve holiday. When we did the sc, the calendar for the rest of the year, we just put Christmas and Thanksgiving, because that's last year, kind of a weekend. So this year, it doesn't, and we've got some questions. What got brought to our attention, that we didn't get any time off for Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve. So the state, we usually follow the state. We usually follow the state's calendar.
Yes.
And they have already scheduled for them to be off the half a day on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. Do you all want to just do that, because that's what stands, and then if the state calls off all day, we'll, like, just follow their schedules?
That's a, I think.
All the state recommendations.
Right. Are you going with that?
Go on.
Okay.
You want a motion?
Yeah, let's do that.
I go ahead and move, take the half-day and Christmas Eve, New Year's Eve, unless it's changed by the state, then whatever they recommend, we'll go with it.
Okay, all right. So a motion in second, all in favor, aye? And I just want to do, under unfinished business, we have Ms. McCallis, and that was about the horse park over to my river. I was able to find some maps and a few things with that. I'm gonna have to call Larry Stutler with the EDA and see if he can locate the rest. I know there's more information with it. So, but I called Mrs. McCallis yesterday and talked to her, told her, as soon as we got it all together, I'll call her, she can come up and look at it, and we'll work through it and see what we can figure out, so hopefully, we can put it on a future agenda and figure out something we can do with this. But right now, that's where we are. Okay, under new business, have you all had a chance to look at the new business? Okay, I know there was, you know, we did this agenda Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, so we couldn't make changes to it. New things have come up since the agenda that's kind of concerning.
Yeah, the, in reference to that, I know we've got an agenda to pay all the full-time employees a three-hundred-dollar increment payment. Due to some litigation that has arisen, in the meantime, I don't, I don't know, you know, if that, that would be something that we want to go into, not knowing the cost of this independent litigation. I mean, it's just a thought, I mean, whatever the commission want to do, I'll, I'll support it. But I do think that we're gonna have to start looking at things more critically now that we're involved in another litigation, which, and, and the basis of that litigation also could be impacted by a decision on this, I think, or be used against the commission.
I agree. I agree.
So if we can, if it be the commission's will, if we can just go ahead and strike that particular motion, then I'm okay with everything else.
Okay, so let's have a motion to approve new business with, with the exception to not, at this time, approve to pay the employees their three-hundred-dollar increment payment.
I agree.
Okay, we have a motion.
Motion.
We have a motion in second, all in favor, aye? Motion, I see. Okay, a couple of things I want to say about the point, but it'll be adjourned. The McCorville Community Center, Saturday morning, is sending a fundraiser for their community center, a brunch, I think they're calling it, from ten to eleven. Ten to one. Ten to one, I'm sorry. Ten to one, ten to eleven, I'm figuring.
What do we like to put now?
Ten to one, so if you're over that way, stop in, they, I think they raised quite a bit of money the last one, they had some of the churches and things are going together and helping them to do this. So hopefully, they can keep, keep raising money and keep the doors open over there, and they're doing some good stuff with their outreach program. And I think that's it, besides early voting in Saturday, we've had a big turnout so far. Darrell, can you do, maybe exact number on the?
Thirteen hundred and fifty-three.
So I think that's the largest number we've had so far. Mary's point?
I'm trying, well, to mark.
Yes, yeah, okay, before we adjourn, do you all have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to make comment on the passing of Steve McCallis. He, the years I worked here, he was, he worked quite a few of them years, and he was a faithful servant to the commission and the community. And I just wanted to note his passing, so that we can get, we can compliment him on the job that he did and appreciate the work that he did.
T-Mobile Tower, Samaritan, Stone, the, start getting service, and we'll get down to the office. And the T-Mobile has a foot on the Yaki Tower, I think, the last meeting or so. Bobbing off the tower, so we got that one.
That's what that phone call was about, that I stepped out for, the T-Mobile technician locked himself up, locked in over there, Yaki, he couldn't get out. So I had to give him the combination to go to lock. They're expecting Yaki will be in, on my head next. They're expecting Yaki will be in, on the mid next week, which also means the Hamlin and West Hamlin should also be on sometime also on the mid next week. And his text message also said, call me, call me tomorrow, I may want to talk to Lincoln County about building some more sites, so.
There you go.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to tell you, I'm Valerie Lance, I'm with the Attorney General's Office, I'm your Lincoln County rep. I took a look at Penny Adams. So, you guys, I'll leave my card up there, it's the same number as her. I wonder, I was gonna ask you after the meeting, you're a new face here. Well, I've been around, I've done a couple of events up here about Lincoln County, and a couple of secret centers, I've done a couple of Y Word. I'm covering myself.
Helen, I appreciate the work that you're doing.
No problem, I'm, I'm looking forward to being able to talk to Crump's candidate just as much as you are.
Yeah, we'd like to be able to talk to you further on the other side there, too, but it's, it's, it's done, I don't know.
That's great, dear. When we get this going, maybe, hopefully by the next meeting, we can tell everybody, give them some information on how to get them a T-Mobile phone.
Well, you can, you can call, just call, and you give them a, a number on your phone, and they'll tell you if it's compatible with what they have. If it's not compatible, then you have to buy a phone. But if you have a compatible phone, which are some of the newer phones, then all you have to do is get a SIM card, and you just, a SIM card is one of the most... They, they told me they didn't have any plans of, of really actively setting up any stores yet, because they wanted the network to have this off factor. When you change the T-Mobile, it works in ways you've never seen a cellphone work before. So, they're really not, I would guess, encouraging people right now to go out and sign up, but I called from, from the street in front of the ambulance station there in front of Yaki the other day, off the Samaritan Tower, so...
And is that, is that just cell service, or is there data, I mean?
Well, there will be data.
Both.
Right, okay, just making sure, okay.
Okay, Sprint, the Sprint and T-Mobile are...
No.
So, if...
Sprint and Verizon use the same type of service.
Well, somebody was asking me, but they had an AT&amp;T phone.
AT&amp;T currently has a roaming agreement with T-Mobile.
Oh.
My T-Mobile phone, when I'm in areas of West Virginia, does not have T-Mobile service, it works, but there's been announcements made that they will discontinue that users agreement very soon. And I know that my AT&amp;T phone does not work where T-Mobile works now. So, my county phone, which is AT&amp;T, I don't have any service in Samaritan, but when I pull my T-Mobile phone out, I do. So, the roaming agreement is there, one-sided right now, it's soon to be dealt away with for purposes of competition, to be honest with you. So, if you want to fully utilize T-Mobile in its fullest extent, you're gonna have to have a T-Mobile phone. Same difference. You're gonna have to have a T-Mobile account.
Yes.
All right, we have it on the agenda to adjourn to our regular session, which is December sixth, two thousand eighteen. We are having a special session in the morning at nine o'clock to retain legal counsel. Unfortunately, we're being forced to do that, because we have those conflicts with the prosecutor, and the insurance representing us. So, we'll meet at nine in the morning and go from there with that. So, do you all have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Okay, we are adjourned.